First. Town of Bowling Green, work session meeting. Uh. First item up for bid, I mean up for bid. I think I'm at an auction somewhere. First item up on the agenda for the work session is wastewater and water updates. Uh, Mark, uh, Ivan, how you say that? Emboden? Oh, Mark Emboden, oh, okay, with Emboden Environmental. Oh, you're the owner of the company there. So much. Sam, you're home. All right, well, welcome. Well, welcome, sir. Appreciate it. Does, uh?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything you want to talk about before we start or not?
Sure, I'll introduce Mr. Mark Emboden from Emboden Environmental Services. We'll do an update on water and wastewater services and operations. Based on the time that they've taken over some of these.
Sure. Thank you, India. So, uh, thank you, India, for the introduction. My name is Mark Emboden. I'm with Emboden Environmental Services. With us is our project manager, Jamie Silvius. He has been in the wastewater industry for just under 20 years. He is the project manager here. He's a dual license operator, class one wastewater operator and class four water operator. Uh, I myself, I'm a dual licensed operator as well. I got a class one water or wastewater and a class two water. I've been in the water and wastewater industry for quite some time. Our company is a multifaceted environmental consulting firm and utility management firm. We operate water and wastewater utilities across the state of Virginia. Um, and Town of Bowling Green is one of the latest that have, you know, kind of come under our care. We are located in Mount Jackson, and that is in the valley region of Virginia, in the Shandau Valley, right in the halfway point between Harrisonburg and Winchester. We have approximately five field offices, and I say approximately because that's changing as new utilities come online. We're associating them as field offices. We have about five field offices located throughout Virginia that we kind of staff our different regions. We were founded in 1993, so we have over 30 years of business performance here. And, uh, as I said, we're multi-disciplined utility management firm. The various clients that we serve range from commercial, industrial to, uh, you know, municipal. And just here's a listing of some of the localities that we currently serve. So we, we serve facilities ranging in different geographic regions of the state of Virginia. We are currently only in Virginia. But some of our larger facilities, you can see their King George County Service Authority, and then the Town of Colonial Beach as being our most, or other recent acquire. But as you can see, some of these clients, Clark County Sanitary Authority, we just signed another 10-year contract with them. We started that project over 20 years ago. And so they're, they're one of our legacy clients. And when we, we sign on with someone, it's our expectation that we partner with them. We manage their utilities in the way that they desire. We keep them in compliance, and in turn, we have a long-term client. So we'll go to the next slide. So we'll start talking about some of the challenges here. And India, feel free to chime in if you want to opine on anything that we have here. But there was in Q1 gross alpha exceedance, and this is the fourth consecutive quarter of exceedances. And what that does is that triggers a notice of violation, a process and procedure with VDH. And as such, there's notification requirements and there's enforcement action, so to speak, that VDH will then enact. And what that, what that looks like is a consent order, which is essentially a legal document that is an agreement between both the town and the Department of Health, the state, as what to do about the situation. You know, gross alpha is not, you know, something that is from anyone's negligence or misoperations of the facility. It's common groundwater in this region, and it's something that we'll have to deal with. We have here that, you know, the already proposed remediation was a green sand filtration, but the green sand filtration will not remediate radionuclides. We are in discussions and consultations with Stantec. And Emboden Environmental Services has been brought into those discussions as subject matter experts for the town. And some of the treatment propositions that we are recommending is either ion exchange or reverse osmosis, but with a heavy leaning towards ion exchange. The reason why we have this heavy leaning for ion exchange is because we treat radionuclides at the Town of Middleburg, and that is indeed how we treat them there. We use ion exchange goes gross alpha radionuclide, it's an ion. And so through, it's a softener, so a softener system will be able to remediate and bring down those levels to acceptable ranges. So there have been a series of notices to the public as required by the various VDH proceedings and notices violations for the gross alpha. And I don't mind to stop here and receive any questions if you have before we move on to wastewater. So that, that is in discussion, and I believe we'll be discussing that later on today. The, the schedule for that is incorporated in the consent order as a schedule for compliance. And that schedule was driven namely by Stantec and their hydrogeologists about locating different wells, you know, doing some remediation of the current well systems. But, but I believe we'll be going into great detail on that later. Those wells that have gross alpha exceedances. So you're thinking right. So once the well is drilled and we explore that well and make sure it has adequate water supply, groundwater characteristics will be evaluated. And if there is gross alpha, we'll have to treat for that. But if there isn't, we wouldn't have to build out anything that would remediate that. All right, we'll go ahead and next slide. For the wastewater side of things, uh, we, we thought it best to kind of characterize the, the goings on from January to June. June is when Emboden took over operations at the facility. During this time, we had two, you know, unauthorized discharges or permit exceedances, we like to call them. And, uh, you know, one for TKN and then one for E coli. The town received a warning letter about this and the cause of exceedances that for the TKN and E coli. What we can tell from our judgment basis of our operational knowledge is that it, we, we, historically, this facility was plagued with poor sludge management. And, and that, that is some discernment on the operations. There were letters of explanation that were sent to DEQ by, by the county and noting that, you know, that there was some decisions that the town had to make. There was also justification for the unauthorized discharge. That all came from them. But what, what resulted in the, the warning letter was that we were assessed, the town was assessed or the wastewater treatment plant was assessed, the permit was assessed, one and a half points total for the wastewater treatment plant. Now, you can say, what is a point? Well, it's like in golf, the less points you have, the better. DEQ has a compliance process, a, a, a points system, if you will, and four points is the magic number. Once we get to four points, um, we are then, as they call, referred to enforcement. And then much like the, the VDH issue that we're dealing with, we'll have to go into a consent order to get those rectified. And so remaining under four points is, is the goal here. Remaining at zero points is really the goal. But the only way to allow this one and a half points against our permit to go away is there has to be a waiting period of six months with no other violations. And I'm, I'm pleased to announce that from June to now, August 1st, we've had no permit exceedances. And as you can see in the reports that you have, the month of June, the operations there when we first took over, all of the, the various parameters that we test for were well below the F-line permit limits. All right, we'll go to the next slide. So. Yes, sir. So the, the only way that the town, the permitee would receive civil penalties is if we go to enforcement. And so the, the point system that DEQ has set up establishes a grace period, if you will, and allows facilities to have exceedances or upsets, but then bring those back under control. And so no, no fees will be assessed for the, the warning letter that we received. Now, if, if the facility was continued to, to be managed with poor solids management, we probably would have made it to four. And I, I have some pictures that I'm going to show that kind of characterizes, you know, exactly what we're talking about, about sludge management. But that's, that's kind of how DEQ handles that. So when we say inadequate solids management, what does that mean? And so sludge wasting regimens were not adequate enough. The treatment plant is a biological treatment plant. It's, it, we treat waste using biology. And as biology, it replicates. It gets so big and you have to call the herd, essentially like, like a farm would call his herd of cattle. You have to get rid of the, the old sludge or the, the old biomass and allow new biomass to come in its place. And you do that through a wasting regiment. And the solids wasting regiment was not adequate enough to maintain proper treatment for the plant. So this causes poor treatment conditions and a proliferation of a bacteria called filamentous bacteria. And what filamentous bacteria, what that does is it causes poor settleable conditions. You have to have some filamentous bacteria in your, in population in the wastewater treatment plant. That's what binds the flock of bacteria together. But having too much disperses the flock and does not allow the solids to settle. And we, we have a picture of that in the next slide, but before we get to that, I'll, I'll also say that the, the mismanagement of solids caused poor settling in the clarifiers, and that was due to the poor settling sludge. And that is what caused our E coli violation because the solids, although they were not settled out in the, in the clarifier, they were allowed to escape and have a blinding effect essentially of the UV lights. And so we had E coli exceedances. Also, the sludge handling facilities were not being managed properly. And so when we arrived June 1st, the digesters were completely full with zero room to waste. All the sand filter drying beds were completely full, not draining properly. But since then, what we've done, since we took over, we've increased our hauling of solids, of residual solids from the treatment plant to gain us room to actually manage the solids properly. We've also controlled the rotor speeds, and that is the heartbeat of the treatment plant. It provides air and mixing to the aeration basin. And what we found when we got there is they were on all the time. We had an overabundance of air and an excessive amount of air that was causing the, the flock, the bacteria particles, if you will, to be sheared in half, to not let them settle out either. And it also entrained air with the solids that made them buoyant in the clarifier, all causing, you know, issues with, with our, our solids management. So we've, we've enhanced our communications as well with DEQ and VDH. We've, we've had discussions with regulatory agencies. We've, we've let them know that this is now a facility being operated and managed by Emboden Environmental. And so they've updated a lot of their contact list. And I will say that they're, we're very pleased to hear that, that the town has made this decision. I'm also happy to say that we absorbed the Town of Bowling Green staff into Emboden staff. And so it was a, a transfer of, of job from the town to Emboden. And so the, the people that were working at the plant, they're still working at the plant. And, and they're doing a great job under our guidance. We've provided increased training to all the staff on how to do proper process control, things to look for, things to monitor. We've revised a lot of our sample collection points as far as process control. What are we monitoring? And explain how, how the treatment plant works. And it's, it's just a more informed operator will make better decisions. We're also working in, in great collaboration with the town. We've had meetings on a regular basis. And we've also met to discuss and help the town out with different various grant applications. And then we're, we're also working with the public work staff and the collection system and the distribution system to help them manage their workload as well. So the next slide, I'll show you, this is kind of the, the picture on the left is what we walked into. That is poor settling sludge. That, you know, you, you should see at least half of that beaker being clear water on top, supernatant, that's what we call it. And the bottom half being, you know, a well settleable, you know, compacted sludge that we, we can then manipulate and monitor throughout the treatment process. And so as you can see, this picture that you see on the left-hand side, I believe was from July 30th, so Tuesday. And so we've, we've made great strides in the management of the solids and the management of the treatment plant. And we are well on our way to, you know, bringing this plant back in line to where it needs to be. So, yes, sir. It, it is hard to say. It is hard to say. You can have a, a treatment plant upset in 48 hours. It, it's really hard to say. But I, I will say that the issues that we saw here, it does look like it was a, a, a chronic problem that, that has just lasted four months. And I, I, I think it, it was a situation that we were able to resolve quickly. But I, I don't think this is something that just happened overnight. That's hard to say. I would say months.
So not till it was perfect a year ago?
I do not know that. I do not know that. It's a half hour, 30 minutes. Yes, sir. Any other questions? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank Mark and his team, as he mentioned, when he walked in, with my best intentions. And I think in a very short timeframe, he's, and his team has shown that they're subject matter expertise. And given the timelines we were pushed up against to, as a locality, we were pushed to May 30th, they can make a decision. And they came in 1-2-1, really hit the ground running. We can thank the county for the time that they accepted and our time and need. But we definitely have to thank Mark and his team for the work that they've done and the expertise they've provided already as it relates to grants. And the relationship that they've established with both of our regulatory agencies that were in Mount Union comes course to work with.
I guess I do have one question. What's your name, sir? Jamie. Jamie. What are we looking at now as far as improving the plant? Getting where it's better maintained?
Do I need to hit this button or is it ready? So what I've found is so far we've added timers to the rotors to come on for half an hour and go off for half an hour on one of the rotors, which you always need one rotor running to, to create the velocity, to keep everything mixed and moving. You need that so the bugs come in contact with food. But just making that one change has improved the flock formation by a lot, which is what's going to allow the solids to settle correctly. Something else I've found that I would really like to do is, which will even further improve this method, is to have a DO monitored. And because the DO, when the DO gets too high, you can start breeding the wrong kind of bacteria. So if you do have filamentous or anything like that, then it's going to allow that to proliferate out of control. And if you can stress the bugs out, only the strong are going to survive. And you want to stay around 2.0 and then let it fall out. That's also going to help you be more insured to meet your TKN limits and phosphorus. Well, you don't have phosphorus limits, but it'll utilize the phosphorus to grow more, more stronger biomass. So I, I had got a quote together for a DO controller, which is the SC 4500, and two probes to measure the inner and outer ring. And what that would do is instead of going by a timer, you could go by DO, which would vary. It would increase performance of operations 100%. It would, it would increase quite substantially. So I, I think that would be a very wise decision. And also, I don't think this has really been submitted yet, but a sampler would also be really good. That's not going to help the operations, but it is going to help, you know, sampling indiscriminately. You could just set a program and there's nobody going out there to get a sample. It's just grabbing it as it comes. So that could, that's definitely something worth considering.
Could you, while you're also here, could you speak to the item that you requested for the procurement item? The, the controller, that's going to be on our regular meeting, but sensitive here. If you can just highlight why that, why that's in the trailer.
So that's actually what I just explained. The SC 4500 is that. And it has, what it has is the ability to, you can control the DO, it'll see a DO of a 2.0, cut the rotor off. Leave one rotor on, let it fall to a 0.5, and then cut it back on, and then it'll control it that way. Otherwise, somebody has to do that. And through the night, the DO is when you're, through the night is when your DO is going to rise. You don't have any food. The DO saturation is, is much better. So meaning when your, when your rotors cut on, your DO is going to rise very quickly at night. Whereas if it's in the middle of the day and everybody's eating food and, you know, the higher water usage, your DO is going to climb very slowly. So at night is actually when the filamentous issue could become exasperated. It's, it makes it way worse.
One thing I'd like to ask, um, there was a room down there, it was kind of like a mixing room where all the chemicals went in and mixed plant. I mean, cut all that out of it. Is that something we need to go back to and have there?
I would like to use as little chemical as possible because when your plant becomes dependent on chemicals, it is very hard to get them away, get it away from that. So if, you know, if you have a bottle of syrup and a hamburger, if you chug a bottle of syrup, you're going to feel the effects of the syrup pretty quickly. With a hamburger, you're going to eat and it's going to be like 30 minutes later and you're going to feel like you're full. It's the same thing it does to bugs. You know, it, it amps them up and they're ready to go. So is it good to have chemicals ready? Yes. Is it something that I want? I, I look at that as a cost, and if operationally we need it, then yes. But it would be worth looking into to have that equipment working. But I don't want to feed it unless it's necessary.
I had the same question. You know, we have been told that part of the permit for the plant, that we had to have that, that chemical rune up and operational. Is that the case? You know, we, and permit violation by not having that ready? That was one question. Then my other one, we, you know, we had some problems with drying beds and proper material. The sand wasn't the proper sand to be in there. Is that still an issue or has that been?
So far with the changes made to the operation and seeing the setability come more in line, through what I've seen, the, the sand drying beds, there's, I wish I would have had a picture of this. It would be much easier to explain. There's a certain way a drying bed dries, and it can either have really big, long cracks and produce like potato chip-like sludge cake. And then there's also where it can just ash up and it doesn't really seem to dry very fast. And I'm, I've seen the mix of the two, and it's, the filamentous won't quite go completely away. From what I can tell from the sand drying bed, I don't think that there's any issue in the sand totally. But I don't want to make that bold of a claim. I wasn't, I don't see any invoices of the sand and, you know, what type of coefficient the sand may have had. But if we get rid of the filamentous, that should help with sand drying bed. Because it's just the nature of filamentous. It, it doesn't allow things to separate very well. And I'm sorry, you had one other question too. There was two in there.
Well, it was just about the room that had the chemicals. It was mentioned by someone when they went through and did an evaluation that, you know, all of the, you know, all of the apparatus that happened to be in there, it was all removed and that that was a violation of the permit that we have. And I just wasn't sure if that was truly the case. Was that something we need to be worried about or have some understanding? We don't need chemical feed. But just wondering from a permit perspective, is that an issue?
The only issue I can see of not having the chemical feed equipment is if in the O and M manual, it states that you have them and there's a way to operate them, then DEQ can say, your, your O and M manual says you have this equipment. Where is it at? You know, because they're going to want to know what you're going to do in case of emergency and you need to come up with that quick dose of something. The only thing I can think of, Mark, is if there's an emergency with the UV system, does it, does it state in there anywhere?
It, it doesn't. And what Jamie is, I'm not sure who asked the question. I'm not sure. Yes, I can. I apologize. So it, it is operator discretion. And so the, the O and M manual is an enforceable part of the permit. And so if the O and M manual says it's, needs to be there, then it needs to be there, permit requires it. But it, it is operator discretion. If we don't need it, we can then provide a revision to the O and M manual. I, I will say at this point, our large main focus has been bringing the solids under control and restoring proper treatment. And then there, there, there's going to be other items that we're going to be addressing. And we've, we're kind of making a punch list now about different various things that we, we need to tackle in the future. Chemical feed is, is part of that. You know, the basis for the need of that, what, what the permit requires it to be. We just had a, a new permit issued to the town. We do have really stringent ammonia levels. But I believe with enhanced treatment, like what Jamie is, is doing here with the, the timers, the DO sequencing and the proper sludge management, we, we can meet that. In, in the report, you can see the ammonia levels that we've had were, were near the laboratory detection limit, meaning they're, they're extremely low. The laboratory could barely detect it. And so all in all, I feel like we have a good treatment plant here. And, but that is something we'll, we'll have to evaluate going forward.
Question. Kind of a little bit of question, but so you had mentioned that gross alpha is prevalent here based on the best of the problem you can sort of. Given that, is there a way we can anticipate potential problems in the future with our wells because of that? I mean, kind of, we're already putting it in the well because of gross alpha problem. In 10 years, we're going to have another problem because it's so prevalent as opposed to merely a growth. That increase our possibility in putting a new well.
Sure. And, and I would say from, from an operator's standpoint, that's going to be very hard to determine. It, it's really going to be based upon the, the zone of recharge that we have at each well. Where is this water coming from? What, what geology formation, what aquifer? Well, we kind of already know what aquifer, but, you know, where, where is this water circumnavigating through these rocks, picking up this gross alpha and, you know, being pumped out by the well pump? Those questions can be attempted to be answered by hydrogeologists, but. But I would say some, someone with a, a specialty in that field would be more suited to answer that. But great question. Yes, ma'am. It, it has a potential. So your, your water, you, you'll be pulling from a different water bearing zone if, if the level that you change that pump setting is varies enough. But, but again, that, that's something that we'll have, after that occurs, you know, monitoring will, will continue. And, uh, it, it, it's a wait and see kind of deal.
May I add a follow up on one of your questions earlier about what the plant would need to, to operate? Mark had touched on some future potential needs that I would like to share. We're talking in the short term right now, we don't need to operate, but some more longer, larger capital.
So the, the biggest capital consideration that the town is going to have to make is a, a betterment to the solids handling facilities. And what I mean by that is currently, right now, we have digester tanks. They receive the wasted sludge from the, the treatment plant process. It's aerated, it's settled and, and decanted as best as possible to thicken the sludge to about a, you know, a, a eight to 12% solids. And then we pour the drying beds, uh, the sand beds with this thickened sludge. And we de-water our sludge in that manner. But as the town's growth, uh, i- is seeing growth, that may not be adequate to, to keep up with the, the sludge residuals that this wastewater treatment plant is producing. Certainly if we add chemicals, either coagulants or something that will further concentrate solids, you'll have a greater sludge production with chemical usage as well. And that's one of the, one of the negative things with, with chemical usage. But in the future, what we're seeing here is, is a great need for a sludge press. Some way that we can de-water the sludge on a, on an as needed basis. You know, we're, we're not waiting for, you know, ambient temperatures to drop down or, or wind gusts to pick up. And gravity to do its thing by pulling the water from the sludge. We have a mechanical means to actually squeeze the water out of that sludge and form a dry cake that we can haul off to the landfill. And, and it's just, it, it's, it's a reliability standpoint and, you know, what is, what is the most cost effective? But, but what is, what is the most reliable? And as the town sees growth, different developments coming in, what we're going to, we're going to need to have an alternative or a betterment towards sludge handling facilities. We are hoping that there, there may be a used sludge press to come available in the future. There's some other utilities that we are operating. They are getting rid of their old one, uh, potentially. And if, if they do, we're, we are going to see if we can strike some sort of collaboration between both the localities to see if that is a possibility. But, you know, that, that is, that is in the wind right now. We don't, we don't know if that's a possibility or not, but we're, we're going to try. That's correct. We, we've been pumping straight from the digester and hauling it all. Yes, sir. I'm not sure where they're currently hauling it. Do you know where they're currently hauling? That, that is a, a local hauler that is being used. Spotsylvania. What, once we get the treatment plant humming along right where we want it to be, the, the, the main issue is that the filamentous that we're seeing, one of the, the main ways to get rid of the filamentous bacteria is, is through increased wasting. And, and so it, it's going to be once our treatment plant processes is where we feel comfortable that, that we can back off of our wasting regimens.
So it's currently being hauled to Spotsylvania County, but the county refused our sludge after the filamentous issue back to the point it was. So one of the things we'll discuss in the next, we think, is that I'm not handling it with anything. That might be the different county department also, what they can handle as far as what's considered dry and what's not dry too.
So the, the sludge that we're sending over is, it, it is a liquid form from the digesters. And the, the issues causing, uh, they're, them having filamentous, uh, I'm not sure it's stemming from us. Those solids should be put into their solids management facility and not directly into their, their treatment process. So, yeah, that, in, in the future, there could be some discussions that we would have with the town. And, and maybe through some of our consulting and, you know, I, some, some knowledge and best handling practices of the sludge. We, we could potentially, you know, be sending our sludge over to them instead of hauling it all the way to Spotsylvania County. They, they have a larger facility and, but silly as it may sound, uh, smaller facilities are harder to operate. Larger facilities, they, they can take ebbs and flows and, and different treatment and different influent waste streams than smaller facilities can. So it doesn't upset it nearly as much. And with the, the fraction amount that we're sending, you know, several million gallon per day plant dropping in, you know, 4,000 gallons of, of sludge wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have an effect on their plant.
Back with the county was operating, we were getting, um, some checklist to do lists, you know, in their examinations. So the panel, if you have to fix it one, two. There were, yes, they, they were sent several items over the course of a few months. And there was a lot of stuff that would be okay, pushing through appropriate. But there's a lot of things in various degrees of progress. And I know we talked about the rest of more things like that. Did you happen to get any of them, those like progress reports, to know what things like might have been appropriated, but haven't been bought yet, things like that?
We, we did. And the, the town manager and our, our staff had discussions with that report. We, we have put, we, we have altered our focus really in, in bringing the, the treatment plan to under control. But my goal with that is, is not necessarily to, you know, abandon, you know, that, that work that was already done, but more or less concentrate triage, the, the most important thing. And that is the treatment plant and, and its performance. You know, with, with the receiving of that warning letter, you know, it, it was, it was in our, our interest and Jamie and his team's interest here to really hone in on the, on the treatment plant side of things first. Not saying that those, those other items, you know, in, in the current status and where they're, they're left, you know, they will be picked up when, when the time comes. We're, we're kind of out of the, out of the woods, so to speak. But great question. We are, we're monitoring that. Yes, sir. Sounds good.
Appreciate. All right. We're now ready to go into closed session. Ready to move into closed session. We'll need a motion to move in that council convened in closed session pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711, Alpha 8 of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel about the proposal consent order with the Virginia Department of Health. Second, I got to move, I got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Rand. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Hearing none. Ladies and gentlemen, we will, uh, we're going into closed session. Y'all will have to leave, please.
Prove that the best, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully accepted from open meeting requi- exempted from open meeting requirements under FOIA. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion that we made by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or concerned in the meeting by, by council. So do I have a motion that we come out?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I got motion by Jeff, I got a second by Valerie, we are now back in, uh, open session. Uh, also requested my fellow mem- co- council members join in certification motion by each stating I so certify in a roll call fashion. Randy?
I certify.
Uh, David? Valerie? John?
I certify.
Dan? Jeff?
I certify.
Gene? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Are you ready over there? Okay, and the motion is what, sir?
No.
Got it.
Seconding.
I got a ma- a motion by Rand, I got a second by Jeff. Uh, we'll take a roll call. Gene? Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Valerie? David?
Yes.
And Randy?
Yes.
Motion carries a hundred percent. Aight, well, you're running a little late, but, uh, we'll take a couple minute break to use the bathroom. Jeff, do you have something you can put on there that will be right with them? Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to open up the meeting of, uh, Town of Baltimore, Green Town Council Meeting Thursday, August first, twenty twenty four. If I could have everybody please stand and assist me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank. All righty, uh. Moving on to the first, oh, uh, first of all, we need to handle the matter. We need to add an item to the agenda, so I need a motion to add, uh, it would be number three, well, the closed session.
Mr. Mayor, it's good, yeah, it's closed session for discussion with legal counsel, the Keystone Information System Contract.
All right, I have a motion, I need, I need a council member to make, make a motion on that, please.
I'll move.
Jeff? Second by Valerie. Uh, all in favor say aye. All right, we have, uh, added the agenda, the item to the agenda, closed session for tonight. Uh, any other items that we need to do to the agenda? All right, do I make a higher motion to adopt the agenda as it is? I got a motion, Rand, I got a second by, uh, Jeff. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Alright, motion, the agenda has been adopted. First thing on the item is consent agenda. Item one, two, and three. If I can get a motion to adopt one and two, I'd like to have India just to say a couple of things about item number three.
I'll make a motion to accept the item number one and two.
Oh, they're gonna, motion by Jeff, second by Randy, all in favor say aye. Alright. Alright, India, you want to say a little something about number three, please? Just.
Sure, just like we did with the Harvest Festival Event Coordinator. This is approval to hire Ms. Lisa Stevens to be our Christmas Parade Festival Event Coordinator, which is set to be on December 14th from 11:00 to, I think, 4:00 p.m.
Okay, so we're doing it during daytime again, okay. Is there any other activities going on with that?
Yeah, I think in our previous one-on-one meetings, I kind of pulled you all to get a consensus on the date and the time, and that was the time that everyone agreed to. There are no other activities that is on schedule.
Alright. And someone want to make a motion to adopt item number three? Jeff?
I'll second.
Randy, you're second. This is gonna be a duo tonight. Any discussion on that, please? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Moving down to public comment. Public comment. As a reminder, town council and town staff will not respond to questions or be brought up during public comment. If necessary, the item will be sent for the next council agenda for discussion. If council is not appropriate informed or assisted or challenged to have a prejudiced view or wants to discuss a matter, either way, we assure that your issue will be addressed in a appropriate manner within a reasonable time. We speak only in three minutes. Speak, and it's important that we as council and staff who have interfered with the free speech rights of our citizens, by agents, and staff, in order to do comments. You're talking business to me, and I've already said for public hearing, whether you would be given, where you would be given the opportunity to speak on that matter. Public hearing comments are also limited to three minutes per speaker. Alright, I open public comments. Anybody out there wish to address council? Please come up to podium, state your name and address. You got it, Bonnie.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, I haven't been here since April, so I've missed being here. I've been sick, and I did not know the June meeting was changed to Tuesday from Thursday. I did not know that, I was not aware. That's pretty bad, residents don't know the meetings are changed, because I don't do social media. Can I go back to this item three right here that y'all just discussed a minute ago? I liked to made a comment when y'all talked about it, but I couldn't. May I or may I not? But I can make a comment. Okay. Why are y'all paying somebody to do that? That's my comment. Yeah, it's a question more than a comment, I guess. I don't get an answer.
No, we're getting, listen, what I read, we got comments, but staff will get back with you, check the views.
Okay, then, not getting an answer, that leads me to my next comment. I understand y'all having the music on the green again, and I'm asking the question, have you gotten sponsors for that, for the upcoming ones, to cover it so it doesn't cost taxpayers? Why? I've never gotten the answer before, that's not the first time I ask.
I'm not trying to. This, this isn't a public discussion.
No, I understand, but I feel like I got the right to ask a question, but it relates to the budget. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I don't even know how to contact some of them, I do know how to contact some of them, not all of them. Okay.
The mayor, mayor read a little murder, that's what surprised me, I bet those meetings, and, and, and buying, I know it's frustrating. Public comment is the time, it's supposed to be organized, it's a time when you just say, I want answers to why we're paying for maybe parade, and I want to know if we've got proper sponsors. And we're not supposed to answer you like it's a free call.
Okay, well, I just kind of thought you could.
I'll just tell you, but don't take it as disrespect. They're writing it down, they're gonna get back with you. I'd like personally see if we put it later on the agenda, maybe bring it up, but at least it's gonna be put on the agenda.
Okay.
The time we ask it, but don't get frustrated, because we're supposed to sit here and not say anything, and it is hard.
Alright, may I make one more comment and wrapping up David's comment, then I'm done. I do know the Caroline County Agriculture Fair had sponsors for their music. Thank you.
Anybody else pushing to speak? Anybody here, nobody closing? Comment, do you now announce? Member comments. Anybody here wish to say something? Yes, ma'am.
Valerie and Justin and I went to the change of command at Fort Walker, and it was wonderful.
I just want to like thank David and your funeral home for the services you put on for Manchester. Really, really nice. Thank you.
My, my, my comment was gonna be, you know, we definitely need to, in the minutes, recognize that we lost a great friend of Bowling Green. Thank you all that were able to attend his memorial service. Obviously, his funeral material was in Pennsylvania, but Steve served here for 11 years, and for those of us that were on council with him, just not a finer man. And I feel so bad because, you know, he, he came back and helped us, and I, I hadn't seen Steve in several years, and when he came back to some meeting, I, I saw my old, my buddy was, was at age, and, and he was helping us, and he was helping India, and in his typical humble way, and he shouldn't have been, because he wasn't helping, and he, but he wouldn't even tell us, I can't do it, but such a good man, and such a loss for Bowling Green. Just a true public servant.
Yeah, I just want to say that was a good service there at the funeral home, though. Very nice. And in addition to that, also, I forget the full title of it, Bonnie, but the Fort Royal, Fort de July event, that was also a good event, did a good job down there. That was, that was good to visit, and I know Ms. Coyle went down too. That's all I got.
Yeah, I was sorry I had to miss the chain of command. That was my week to go to the beach, so I had to get out there with the family. But I did have a chance to sit down with Colonel Duffy the week prior, had lunch with him, and discussed a bunch of, of, of stuff. And then I had a meet and greet and coffee at the mix house with Colonel Bauer Tuesday. So I got to meet him and talk and, you know, give him the information about the town and what staff is doing, council is doing and stuff, how we like to try to work with the base and base work with us. So, I mean, you know, they got some ideas. Diane Smith was there, which she's the big string puller, you know, the puppet master, so she was there. And Sergeant Major Bailey, I think his name is, he was present as well. So we, you know, we had a good conversation, but I did, I did want to make the change command, but unfortunately I was unable to. Other than that, that's about it for me. Anybody else want to move, move on?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up the music on the green. There was a memo sent out about changing the dates. I think we kind of maybe missed it, because the forecast for August was extremely hot. And if you remember, one of the last music on the greens we had that was getting towards the beginning of, in, into full and the swing of summer, we only had like 50 people show up because it was too damn hot that night. I think these fall music on the greens, they need to be put off until maybe the Friday after Labor Day, and then go on from there when it's cooler, because the whole thing is this, to get people in the town so they know what's going on. But if it's 100 degrees, they're not gonna come in town, so what does it make? Why do we pay the band to play? They can't even play because it's too hot for them. The last time it was, they played, it was so hot, the band had to have a cooling station just to cool off, because it's too hot up on the stage for them. So I think we're doing it, maybe we need to start a little bit sooner in the spring. This year we did pretty good, we had one day that was super hot, but I think going in and doing two weeks in August, I think we're just, we're wasting our money. And I mentioned that in an email, when it came back out to me about change of dates, I said, I think we need to go in September if we're gonna change them and get it out of August, because August forecast is like this, like what we're seeing today, all the way through. So how many people are we gonna get the last two Fridays of this month? Probably not very many, so are we spending our money wisely doing that? That's all I want to say.
Anybody else want to move on? Alright, closing member comments, moving on to staff reports. Item number four, town manager. You have anything you'd like to say, or are you gonna let your?
Thank you, Mayor. In close is my monthly report, there will, are some highlights in there, but I'll start with one of the most important things we, I would like everyone to know, and that is addition to our website related to the EPA's lead-in copper rule revisions. There is a federal mandate that is requiring localities to identify their drinking water service lines. We've worked with a nonprofit that is helping smaller localities to come up with our survey for our locality. So on our website, right under the news section, there is a link to the survey. You can take the survey by a link directly. You can take the survey by scanning the QR code on your phone, and you can print off the survey and bring it into town hall, and we will take your paper survey that way and then put it, put it into our system if, if either one of those options are not something you want to take advantage of. Our deadline for this will be the end of September. We have a federal requirement to have this to the state by October 16th, so we're gonna have a couple of weeks just for our staff to be able to get, to compile the, the rest of the data to get that off to meet our state regu, state and federal regulatory requirements. So you have some, the actual paper survey out in, in town hall, right in front of the front desk, and also available on the website. Also of note included in the report, just to highlight a few things, our FY22 audit is still underway. Been working with our finance director, Ms. Staples, on that as well as staff. Coordination of the year in close for FY24 and transitioning to 25. Ms. Staples has worked with the chief to close out some grant requirements related to ARPA for public safety. Our FY21 final audit has been posted to the town's website, so that's available. I mentioned our planning and design grant was submitted by me to the Virginia Department of Health for our hydrological source evaluation. We held our ICA kickoff meeting with the new Fort Walker commander and base leaders regarding our next steps on the ICA partnership. We'll have a subsequent meeting later in August. Our growth alpha action plan was accepted by, by VDH. That was discussed a little bit earlier in our work session. We've also been coordinating with VDOT on closeout of projects, and I've been coordinating with Caroline County Tourism Staff across promotional marketing opportunities, really since the beginning of the fall. Vice Mayor Coyle made the connection there, so we've been cross promoting our events, and we'll do the same with Music on the Green, as well as our Harvest Festival and other events. I think that's a highlight, our Harvest Festival planning continues, Christmas Parade pre-planning underway. National Night Out is going to be next Tuesday, August 6th from 6:00 to 8:00, and then the Music on the Green dates are there. If there wanted to be a change to music on event, music on the green for this fall, we would need to notify those vans relatively shortly. Those were already pre-planned by previous staff, so we would need to notify them, and we can keep that in mind for moving forward in 2025, if that's, if that's a consensus, council.
Yeah, I'm not saying about moving them this year, I just think in the next, next time we plan something like this, maybe we need to look at it and go a little bit later in the fall, because sitting out there, I mean, I was there that night, it was really hot, and it was just, I mean, it was pouring down my face, and the band, they were trying to set up something because the sun would shine on them. They were setting up a big tent with a big wall, keep the sun off of them and everything else, and it's, it's just not good.
We would probably want to start them a little earlier, because we were having to rent back lights, so that was an extra cost when we did it later in September.
Yeah, that's why we started now for me, six, kind of gives us that break, because you start going back six o'clock, it's dark and it's, so it's, we gotta fight the, fight the daylight, yeah. And then if you get too early, people aren't off of working time, so we gotta, it's, it's, and we can't control the weather, but I know what you're saying, it's a hit or miss type deal. Yeah, you're right, hey, yeah, we got, we gotta give something for the taxpayers. They gotta have something to do. We gotta entertain them. Yeah, we could do that. See, all these dates, you can change them that way around, so it's different ways to look at it.
I think we, we can definitely have further discussions as we have more conversations around economic development and tourism for 25, and happy to, happy to hear that before we book anything in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, thank you.
Alright, public works, he's not here, but y'all can look at it and read. We're still having a big problem with the wipes coming down, getting caught up in the grinders in the, in pump stations, coming out of Maury Heights and, or, yeah, Maury Heights area and stuff, so that's a big issue. Don't know what we can do about it, we're not gonna be able to stop it. I don't know if some other system out there that can help grind them up better or what, but it's just. Yeah, stop making them, make them more disposable, but yeah. But anyhow, but you can read about that there. Moving on to number six, finance director, treasury report, you have anything for us there? Thank you, Tina. Nope.
So for the 941s, just to keep you updated, so we did finish FY21 941s and the FY24 941s, so 22 and 23 are still outstanding. We finished reconciling all the cash balances through June, June 30th of 2023, so we still have to go through FY24, which is kind of why I say in this that we're still adding in adjustments and expenses into the books. So the numbers are in a good spot, but they're, I wouldn't call them final numbers yet until we've had a chance to complete the entire fiscal year. But we're making a lot of progress. We also had an audit from Versa, which is our insurance company for workers' comp. They normally send out just a, a paper, like an email. Sometimes they come out if they haven't gotten a response, so, and I've been through that before. This one, they were a little bit more thorough, but it could just be because it's been a while. But we got that taken care of and completed in a day. So far, yeah, so far so good. It took me probably a little bit of wrapping my head around trying to get it all lined up properly, but once I was able to find that, it did even out. So I filed them, and we'll just see if they come back with any fines to assess.
Yes, just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's usually the hardest people to collect from, the accounts have gone inactive, and no collection procedures are currently being used to, to try to grab some of that utility fund money, which I think was a 60 grand or plus outstanding. So the easiest way to do that is to use the debt set-off program through the Virginia Department of Taxation, and what they do is whenever you get your tax return from the state, they're gonna take the money that is owed to the town out of it before they give you your tax refund. So it's quick, it's easy, and it's, it's. So it's quick, it's easy, and um it's, it it's kind of a lot of upkeep, kind of like a DMV stop program, but it is pretty efficient. Mm-hmm. Thank, oh, sorry. Any other questions? Thank you. I'm terrible.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, how are y'all? Good to see everybody. Glad everybody's doing well. Um, just wanted to touch on something India just had said. Uh, this Tuesday coming up is uh the National Night Out. Um, we're going to have it from six to eight behind the uh Police Department where the park is at. We'll have food, drinks, um, face painting, music. Um, the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department will be there to join us as well. So I encourage everybody to come out. Everything was donated to the town, so it doesn't cost us anything. So it should be a good time, and I hope to see everybody there. Um, they go from location to location, so it's hard to say what, he's got a lot to cover throughout the county, so, but I know he'll be out. Oh, that's what the plan is. So, yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. That's right. All right, good seeing you. Take care.
All right, I'm going into public hearing. Uh, information that I read earlier, public comments, you know, public hearing. Public hearing is going to be with Breeze Line, uh, franchise agreement. So I will open up public hearing. Speech about Breeze Line. Yeah. Five minutes, three minutes, three months, and then we have three minutes. Well, yeah. Thank you all, Bob. Thanks.
Counsel, I could say what I was going to say. Were you?
Can you walk, Dave? My bones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I actually didn't know y'all were having a hearing tonight, but I did hear that there was something about the franchise agreement with Breeze Line. And I just, I know you'd probably have to renew the agreement or something, right? Is that what's happening? Uh, I know things have been here a lot of years, but I thought in years past, and I thought things were handed down, so to speak, that they would continue to have an office here in town, which doesn't exist anymore. Wasn't that originally the part of the plan? I think. I could be wrong. Also, Breeze Line has a lot of issues. I am so tired of getting my a bill. Every time I get a bill, they raise it up. It goes up. It's like they raise it whenever they want to, the cost. And why can't I have a contract for one year that I know that my bill is going to be the same thing, it's not going to go up? Or or some length of time, other than every other month they raising my bill. So I actually was on, just shared this with y'all. I was actually on the phone with him this morning. And before I hung up, the gentleman actually told me something. I was shocked. He said to me, he said, we got a lot's going to happen in the future. I said, oh, what are you talking about? He said, oh, we eventually going to go to everybody that's had to have streamlining, streamline, whatever you call it, equipment. I know nothing about it, don't want it, don't need it. So they're steadily upgrading, and I guess we got to pay for it. Is that what we got to do? And they're forcing us to do something that I really don't want to fool with? I don't want to fool with all that. I don't need all that, whatever it is. Maybe some of y'all can tell me what streamlining is. What is it, Daniel? You know, David, Randy, anybody? You know, Mark? It's streaming. It's called streaming. They said, and he couldn't tell me how soon. I said, you're talking about months or a year from now? He said, we're not sure that it's in the works. All their equipment is going to be streamlined and everybody will be switched over to it. You won't have any choice. No, I'm just asking if y'all know what, because I don't know. Anyway, I think Breeze Line has issues. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I wish we had another, another uh one with another provider.
Mister Fran, if you're on the line, if you want to make a comment as related to the agreement of the time. Make a comment as a member of the public. Before he wants to address the comments separate.
All right, let me, let me close that up here. Next, I want to add is uh, paid financial agreement. You can make the franchise, you can make the conference there, you can say, anybody else? Somebody else, public hearing is slow. Next, I have one gentleman, item number five.
Meeting up. Uh, so you're where, we've been talking about this for a while now, but your old agreement had, I think, been expired for a number of years. Um, franchise agreement is just essentially what understate and federal law authorizes uh the providers of these services to use public property and rights away um to install their equipment. Used to be and operate their equipment, used to be that you would collect a specific cable franchise fee. Um, twenty sixteen or so, the state changed that and consolidated a whole host of local state taxes fees into a single state telecommunications tax. So you don't get a cable franchise fee anymore. What you get is uh a tax that the provider pays to the state and the state emits a portion back to the locality. So it's not really a fee getting contract anymore. Um, and it's kind of, these are kind of boilerplate. So um I'll tell you, big picture, what what's in here that's not in your home. Uh, to Bonnie's point, customer service. So I'd I'd encourage you to get a copy of this from staff and look through. If you have it, I think it's online, too. I assume it's online. Um, so the customer service provisions in here um are, were not in the agreement before. So they're mainly drawn from federal law, but it, but what the contract does now is it spells out timelines for responding to customer complaints, the process for that clarity and how billing is done. So so if you compare this to the prior franchise agreement, this one's much more beefed up. Um, in my opinion, on the customer service side, on the billing side. Um, no, the town does not have control over rates, so the county, the town council can't can't set the rates, but um, I think they're much more robust provisions on on customer service that are now very transparent and in the agreement. So that, those are the, that's the main thing that's new. The other thing I'll point out um is there's been discussion leading up to this of the of town property that's specifically used for these hubs that they have. Um, and so counsel had had wanted us to look into that more, figure out if it was being addressed in the franchise agreement. It was not. So um, it's on, I think on page twelve, but I have the marked up version. So I don't know if it's on your page twelve. Section eighteen, the end of section eighteen, you'll see that now we've put that in the agreement, seven thousand dollars per year per site um of the hub shelter equip, uh hub shelters. So that's, that's now in there and that's new. And um uh Breeze Line agreed to that change. And it's the federal law that requires the public comment, advertising public comment for the renewal of the franchise. And that's, that's why we did that. That's not actually a state law requirement. That's big picture. Um, it's been uh kind of languishing, I think, long enough. I think it makes sense now to go ahead and and go forward with this improved, updated agreement. Um, it's not exclusive agreement, so, you know, it doesn't prevent if the market's there, other companies. Um, it's just one that authorized Breeze Line to do this. So um, that's all I have unless you have questions and and maybe input from Fran from Breeze Line who's on the line might be helpful, but um, it's fifteen. Fifteen or twenty, um, already. It's fine. Unless we revise the agreement, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't get into, I don't think it's any sort of escalation. Correct. The term years, I think it's, 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 Randy, you know offhand, it's fifteen or?
It's fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Want to say anything, Brad?
Yeah, I I just want to thank Council and uh India and Jeff for all of the work that's gone into this. Um, as Jeff has stated, it's been a long process. I first set the draft to uh the town back in March of twenty twenty-two. Um, and we've had a couple of meetings, um, video meetings. Uh, we had one back in uh twenty twenty and we had another one in twenty, March of twenty twenty-four. Um, but as Jeff said, the customer service standards, which are basically the FCC customer service standards are spelled out in the agreement. The agreement is strictly, uh, it only regulates cable TV services. It has nothing to do with broadband services, high-speed internet. Um, under federal law, we are permitted to utilize our wires to do that. But the cable franchise itself strictly deals with cable services. Um, and just to to touch on the one comment uh that the young lady brought up as far as streaming. Uh, we are going through a change in our technology. Um, it's no different than when we went from everything was analog to everything was digital. Uh, and then we went from everything being digital to everything being encrypted. Um, this is, uh, it's streamed TV. It will, it operates basically the same way as uh the current service. The only difference is it's IP-based. And so there will be a need for um an internet connection in order for the service to continue to operate. The regarding the uh um more than one provider, as Jeff said, the agreement is not exclusive. Um, so an another operator could come in and provide service, provided the town um did not give them a franchise agreement that was less burdensome than the one that we have. It would have to be on equal terms. Um, but there is additional uh competition out there. There still is Dish and DirecTV that provide the video services, the same as what we do. Um, all of the services have gone to uh their own streaming um of their services. And so those services can be picked up individually or as a group, you know, through Hulu or Roku or several others that are out there. Um, and so there is a good bit of competition. There certainly is a good bit of competition on the high-speed internet side. Um, so I I just want to thank everyone for their diligence in getting this done. I apologize that we didn't have anybody there, but I wasn't aware that uh we were expected to have anybody. I'm actually on vacation right now. Um, and I got the email from India earlier this afternoon, so um if there's any questions that you have, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but that's all I have.
I have one question. So you say streaming, you do that, you have to have internet, the internet both talk.
Mr. Mayor, I could hardly hear you, sir.
Um, is the, is the internet service that you have to have when you go through to the streaming mode, is that going to change and be reduced? Because the internet is most, most costly. Uh, saying about having internet cable at the house. So if something just says cable, now they have to have internet.
They will have to have an internet connection with us, yes, Mayor.
Right. What I'm saying is the cost will remain the same because we're forcing people to go have that with streaming? Or what?
There would, there would, there would be the cost for the high-speed internet connection, yes, Mayor. And then there would be a cost for the streaming service.
If I got anything else? I got first, I got a motion by David that says I got Valerie. All in favor of this agreement, also arguing for the discussion.
Did you have a timetable on that conversion there, Mr.?
Uh, it's probably going to be over the next year or so.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. You oppose, here is not a motion carried a hundred percent. Thank you, sir, for hanging online with us and uh we'll be looking forward to working with you in the future. Again.
Thank you very much, and you guys have a great evening.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
You know, the new agreement, we're collecting money for the buildings. Were we collecting money in the loan agreement for that?
Yeah, it was fixed out on the bank. Did we collect it? Yeah, they were paying for it.
We collected about seven thousand dollars, but I believe it was going for one hub. I think the difference was there was a MetroCard hub that we discovered on a site visit. And that, I don't believe, was a part of Breeze Line because one was acquired the other somewhere along the way. But I think they were only ever paying that for one hub, which was their original hub. So in this agreement, we'll now be receiving funding for both.
Moving on to item number ten, CFP project Town Hall rehabilitation.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as part of our budget process, we identified um remaining ARPA funds that could be um invested back into this building, which we know has some challenges as it relates to um remediation. Um, some potential door repair replacements, uh, safety enhancement and potentially for refinishing. So this item is seeking approval to proceed with rehabilitation as we identified it and earlier in the CFP process um on Town Hall. Um, we have a little bit of time and window, Sean's not here, but to begin some of this work, to not interfere um with with future events for the rest of this this calendar year. So we're hoping to try to get some of this work done. Uh, we received a number of complaints recently um as related to building conditions, which I fear could deter future rentals and potentially result in a loss of revenue. Um, but definitely want to get the ball rolling on this item.
This one I definitely want to get. I just make a motion. Sure.
When you say fully finishing, you don't need sanding.
I have a prior, yeah, I have a prior vote from someone I think that you reached out to before for refinishing, and that's where I'll probably be going back to for those efforts. I have a prior, yeah, I have a prior vote from someone I think that you reached out to before for refinishing and that's where I'll probably be going back to for those efforts.
Those are the ten days and then the seven seconds. Therefore, if you don't see them, well, that's probably your thing. Just like, you know, it'll be done when they did it the first time. I don't know what it was. Yeah, Jeff, you want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that.
First by Jeff, second by Valerie. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You oppose. Hearing none, motion carried a hundred percent. Moving on to item number eleven. Need to adjust the policy. Tina? Want to take off with him?
Yes. Hello again. Thank you, sir.
Is your mic on?
It's, it's green. Is that on? Okay. Sorry, Mark. Good with the hardware, better with software. Okay, so the, the reason for this request is because the town doesn't currently allow for leak adjustments in your town code. And it's, I personally think, professionally, of course, as well, that it's important to have some kind of relief for your residents in the case of something that happens that's beyond their control and then they have a lot of water being lost and then they get a three thousand dollar water bill. At this point, I can't waive it now without some kind of policy that you all have approved that I can follow. So the suggested policy that I put in there, it will take, your water bill would have to be at least double whatever the average is. And we get the average by going through the last four billing cycles and using that, whatever is the most recent average. So if it's twice that, we can take a look at it. And this, it will only apply to residents that fix and repair their leaks and have to show proof of repair. So it's not just enough to discover a leak, you have to fix it. And then we can give them credit on the water and sewer side. The only time that the sewer portions are not adjusted is if it's toilet running. I would advise you to, I constantly listening for running toilets. You'd be surprised how much water they can go through, which is just awful for like literally a nine dollar part, you know? So things like that, if it's going into the sewer system, we have to treat it. So then we, we shouldn't waive those fees because we, we still incurring the expense. So, but you know, of course, whatever, if you want to make changes to that, or if you have other requests, I'm happy to, to do that too.
There, they have to bring this, the insurance, they've identified the problem.
Yes. And that's usually, I mean, that's what I've always required in the past and contractors are great about just emailing something over or you know, if you've had a plumber come in and you pay, they're going to give you some kind of slip or invoice. That's all you have to show. Is that, just that you repaired the problem because we don't want to, we can't give someone a leak and then the, the problem is continuing then over and over and over again. So it, it helps us have less water loss too, because this is treated water. So we want to try to keep that to a minimum, to keep your build distributed as close together as you can. So we're not losing as much water. But this is also a good way to help track that because leak adjustments that we're giving, we can see how much water was, water was lost specifically in those cases and have that for the auditors because that's something they look at as well.
Since like the last couple of months, you know, now you have a solid team here. If I had a company that's kind of like, what would be the current?
Currently, I couldn't offer any resolution because the only thing I can do is follow what's in your town code. And that's all I have authority to do. So then I have to come to you all and ask or have the town manager ask, of course, you know, for exceptions. And the problem with making exceptions is everybody's going to want one then. And it's easier if we just have a clear-cut policy that I have to follow and everyone gets the same treatment and that makes it. Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I move the council through the justice. All right, I have a motion there. David, we got seven, Randy, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, propose.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Jeff, this is, well, we want to briefly like determine the question. For S forty-five hundred.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we heard about this one earlier. I think a motion would be. Question.
Uh, you want to make the, I'm going to read this. We have a dollar amount and it's going to be the whole thing to me.
On my agenda. I want you to, we got, we got. Thank you, Dan. I move that the town council authorized the town manager to proceed with procurement of this component for the wastewater treatment plant for an approximate total of eleven thousand dollars, a thousand three hundred dollars to be expended from the sewer plant. And the, the item is the SC forty-five hundred.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Got a motion by Jeff. Second, second by G. In further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, any opposed? Now there'll be closed sections coming up. I'll leave the motion. I'll need somebody to make it. Close session motion. We approve that council convenes in closing pursuant to section two point two to three, seven, one, one, Alpha eight of the Code of Virginia. It's called the legal council about the Keystone contract, about the town contract, the Keystone, the nation's secret. I want to make that motion. Someone, Jeff, second by Red.
I was hoping you didn't get the gavel. I didn't get the gavel.
Yeah, you're right. Hang on. I take it back. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Hearing none, we are in closed session again.
Thank you.